Okay, call the meeting to our place. Mr. Brown, would you please lead us in the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your relative people which stands for the nation of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. I like to see everybody here. Please call the rule, please.
Councilmember Bond?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Mayor Hoag?
Here.
Councilmember McMillan?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Walsh?
Here.
Okay, our first item is public participation and we have two paragraphs. One from Shannon Roberts. Shannon?
I know we're gonna be thanking the first responders in a little bit, but I wanted to also, if I could, from the residents' perspective, also thank FPL. We stayed on Beachside during Matthew and FPL serviced us all the way through the evening and into the early morning. We only downed two and a half hours. That was just unbelievable. We were direct to the beach too, so I just want to thank FPL. Also, Bright House, the same thing. Did a great job of servicing our community. Publix was open until Wednesday before the storm at 3:00 and they were fully stocked. And we were saying that, of course, they couldn't come to Eastside, but we were so proud that our own store, Cornerstone, had all those supplies. And they had a new shipment coming in that morning just to make sure we were okay. Race Track had gas the whole time, so again, thanks so much to Race Track. Wendy's was open the very next day servicing the community and just wanted to mention, if I could, I know we often don't celebrate our businesses, but I just wanted to thank in particular those because they just did a remarkable job of servicing our community and making our experience so much better than it would've been, along with the first responders. The second thing is just wanting to announce that, as you know, usually when we have an election for a city council, we have a meet and greet or some kind of a public forum. So we are gonna have a meet and greet at the library here in this room on Saturday, October the 29th. It'll probably be from 10:30 in the morning till 1:00. So it's an opportunity for our community to meet and greet the council candidates and ask questions, just, you know, just to get to know them, et cetera. We may cut that off a half an hour one way or the other, but I just wanted to use that time period to announce that. Again, just a chance for our community to meet the candidates, ask questions of them, and so forth, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Okay, our next is Joyce Hamilton. I'm gonna talk about Matthew. Okay, Matthew, go ahead.
I'm Joyce Hamilton, I live at 110 Jefferson Avenue, Cape Canaveral, Florida. I'm here tonight to comment on Matthew, our dear hurricane that just left us. I want you to know I've been here in Brevard County and been through hurricanes since 1963. This was the best well-attended by the personnel of Cape Canaveral and the residents as well. I have never seen anything that was done as well as this was. There were neighbors helping neighbors, there were businesses helping businesses. Kelsey's opened up when they heard that the port had a ship that came in with no place to go to eat. These are things we need to think of in advance from now on. You learn from what you've gone through. We need to check with the port when we have a hurricane like this again to see if they have any ships that have come in that people need to eat or a place to stay. But other than just a couple of things, this was absolutely great. Josh had the trucks out, keep cleaning debris so the Florida Power Light could come and get the power back on quicker. Everyone here was doing a great job and I just wanted to comment and thank you all for such a great thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joyce. All right, I'm gonna, I have a presentation to make and I'd like for, I'd like to come up and have the gentleman involved. Can I have these gentlemen come up forward so everybody can see who you are? Canaveral Fire Rescue Chief Sergeant, Assistant Chief Johnny Cunningham, Captain Derek Josephin, firefighter Jeff Crowley, Reggie Ho, paramedic Reggie Peanut. Okay, I'm gonna read what happened. This is something that was an event that took place during the hurricane. These guys are out there, they were here during hurricane. Things that we don't, never hear about. On October 7th, 2016, at Port Canaveral during Hurricane Matthew, the evacuation, minimal crews were stationed on duty preparation for the storm. At approximately 10:30 a.m., Sergeant Cunningham, I mean Chief Cunningham, Assistant Chief and Chief Sergeant, Security Manager John Brady, is he here?
I didn't know he was supposed to be here, sir.
I'm sorry. The United States Coast Guard Commander West were following up on a damage to the city of Cape Canaveral and Port. Canaveral, one of large metal signs dropped Commander West in the head. One of these big traffic signs you see over the island. Chief Sergeant assumed patient care began initial patient assessment and applied a trauma addressing during controlled bleeding. Cunningham was managing communications attempting to get an ambulance out on site as soon as possible were dealing with radial difficulties related to the storm. During the wind restrictions on the bridges, Brevard County Fire Rescue could not permit any ambulances to respond to Canaveral Fire Rescue. Ambulance had to be moved from the barrier island. Captain Josephin and firefighter Crowley were in the area assessing nearby residential properties for damage. They responded in the utility pickup and assumed patient care for chief with the Chief Sergeant and determined the need for additional equipment. Captain Josephin issued a trauma alert and Engine 22 arrived with firefighter paramedic Peanut, firefighter Ho, and advanced life support equipment preparing for the worst. Firefighter paramedic and firefighter Ho prepared Commander West in package and removed. With the efforts from the storm strengthening, Captain Josephin made the decision to prioritize getting Commander West and recruit to a safer environment as soon as possible. With minimal resources and willing and opinions available, Commander West was placed in the back of Captain Josephin's department pickup truck for emergency transport. The severity of the situation dedicated to life-saving intervention would be needed to complete en route to the ambulance waiting on Merritt Island. Captain Josephin drove the pickup truck with firefighter medic Harry and firefighter Crowley riding in the bed down State Road 23 treating Commander West. Once on Merritt Island, Commander West was emergency transported to Holmes Regional Trauma Center. These four firefighters and Assistant Chief Cunningham volunteered to man Stations 53 so all others could evacuate, along with Chief Sergeant. They acted courageously above and beyond a normal call of duty under life-threatening conditions to directly save the life of Commander West. These guys right here. All right, so was also here on scene, Mr. Morose over here. These guys do things we never hear about, but this one I wanted to make sure we heard about. John?
Bob, appreciate it.
You guys are great. David? I would like to thank all these persons and I'd like to ask, is he doing better? I'm sure we're all.
Had lunch with him today, so he's expected to make a, hopefully a full recovery.
Thank you guys again. Really appreciate you guys being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all can go or say whatever you want to do, but just if the alarm goes, we'll understand. All right, we'll get on to our interviews. We have two interviews tonight. We have a code enforcement board interview, Paula Collins, and an applicant for the library board, Teresa Zopowski. Paula, where are you at? Come on up.
Ms. Garganese. Go try it. Ms. Collins, all the information in your application is true and correct to the best of your knowledge? I see that you're applying to serve on the code enforcement board and you served on the Board of Adjustment for a period of time?
I did.
Okay. As you know, the code enforcement board hears cases and has the authority to issue fines and penalties against code violators. How do you feel about that? Do you feel comfortable being able to adjudicate a case and levy fines against perhaps a fellow property owner or resident of Cape Canaveral?
Well, if a violation seems to warrant it, yes, I do. After, I would hope, a lot of consideration by the entire code enforcement board, that there really was something that needed to be that seriously done.
Yeah.
That would have to be an extreme case.
Well, it happens very frequently on the board. When there are violations, the board does impose penalties if the property owner does not correct the violation. So that just comes with the territory unlike the Board of Adjustment, so there's a big distinction. Mayor?
Start that on in.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, Mike?
I'm fine. I had the pleasure of serving with her on the Board of Adjustment and for about two or three years, I guess, and she's, she's very thoughtful and very objective and I think she'd make a great addition to the board.
Nothing except thank you for your continued involvement with our city. You bring some great experience, especially being with the Board of Adjustments, because I know that's, that can be quite a job too.
Welcome back, Paula.
Thank you.
I've known you for long term, so I appreciate your service and I'm sure the city will appreciate you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, wasn't I going to, Teresa? I think I pronounced your name right. Let me know.
Tracy, T-H-O-S-E.
Good evening, how you doing?
That one sounds like we're gonna need some practice.
Ms. Garganese.
Good evening. All the information in your application is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Correct.
You have some very specific experience when it comes to libraries, so please explain to the council a little bit about your background.
Well, my experience is, well, I do have graduate credits in library science. I did that a few years that I was off from having my son. I was a public school teacher for thirty-some years and I, my experience there, though, is a little different because I was a math teacher, but I was very involved with my library, both in the school and in the community. I volunteered, I helped the teens after school. I sat in the teen room and just worked with teens and pre-teens that would come in that were waiting for their parents to pick them up between 3:00 and 5:00. So I was interested in doing something like that here, or at least volunteering my time with this board, hope to get some ideas, the library, community good, give back.
Mayor?
Nothing. Thank you.
Yeah, I like your resume. I'm a former schoolteacher myself. What changes would you, would you like to make or you see that need to be made?
I'd just like to be there to listen to the ideas, listen to what they're already, they're already doing, fantastic job. You know, the library here, I love this library and I also like the one down in Cocoa Beach. You know, I would just like to be in on whatever they're thinking about doing, maybe bring up some ideas, my own. I've been very interested in tutoring and having some kind of tutoring program with, you know, maybe retired teachers like myself that come in and help, no charge, just, you know, help kids that need it.
Right, in your spare time, I know Capeview Elementary could definitely use you. If you're interested.
I do have a volunteer pass for the Brevard County Schools.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
I just haven't been called.
I really don't have any questions. I read your resume, I think it speaks for itself and you have a degree in math, which I'm very jealous of, so, you know, thank you for offering to help out.
Yes, I'd like to say thank you also. And you have graduate level work in library science. You love libraries, you have great experience and thank you for being involved and committing some time to our city.
Welcome to the board and hello, everybody down here, but if you need anything or you see something that needs improvement, just holler out. We're gonna take care of it. And I sincerely think you're really qualified with what I read here. I'd like to welcome you to the board. Thank you. All right. We will move to our consent agenda and we have a total of seven items on the consent agenda. Anybody, anybody move anything for discussion?
Number?
Good to go, good to go. Anybody in the audience wants to talk about something on our consent agenda? If not, we'll call for motion.
Still moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walsh, second to Councilmember Bond, on the roll please.
Councilmember Bond?
For.
Councilmember Brown?
For.
Mayor Hoag?
For.
Councilmember McMillan?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Walsh?
For the motion.
Okay, item number eight is an ordinance, 04216, Mr. Attorney.
Ordinance number 04-216, ordinance of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopting amendments to the annual general fund, special revenue funds, agency fund, capital project funds, enterprise funds, and enterprise capital fund budgets for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2015, and ending September 30, 2016, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, providing for an effective date. This is first reading of this ordinance. It's the annual true-up of the previous year's fiscal budget.
All righty, anybody got anything they wanna talk about a little? Bringing everything up to snuff at the end.
Happens every year.
Financial house meeting.
In all respects, just real quick, like, is the fund balance improved over and above what was initially projected, so that's always a good thing when you spend less and take in more as a general statement than you anticipated. But in this particular case, it was a pretty good year considering. Next year probably with the hurricane and some of the other challenges, but anyway, or now we're good.
Well, we're in good shape, no problem.
Yes, we are indeed.
No problems. All righty, we call for a motion on that?
I make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, just to be certain, it is a public hearing in case anyone from the public might wish to address this?
I'm sorry. Anybody wanna talk about our money we got left over on the budget? We're gonna use it good, if we use it, we'll save.
And may everything spend from the hurricane. Right?
Mr. Green, I'm talking about the hurricane, then costs. Would you kind of just give the citizens a quick guess and cost, what we're gonna be looking at and Waste Pro, what they're gonna charge us? I think that needs to be noted.
Yes, we made the decision early on to proceed forward with a contract with Waste Pro rather than participation in the countywide cleanup effort. And our agreement with Waste Pro is $20,000 to give us, quote, "a clean city." That works out substantially less per cubic yard than what is the established price on a countywide basis. And the situation with Waste Pro in a nutshell is, we jokingly on Sunday referred to bringing in the cavalry and they arrived here and we had four trucks on Monday morning, very early, and welcomed it to town and it got started right away. They were on our ninth day and I think without question, we will see some additional roles still being played by Waste Pro. They're here for the duration. We are staying close to them because we don't want to take unfair advantage of them, but so far they're feeling comfortable with where we are with them. And if everything stays as we would expect, we'll probably be the first community cleaned up as a result of the hurricane and we're pretty much the last one other than Tidesville and northern Brevard County that the hurricane passed through. So all things considered, we're doing pretty well. FEMA's changed its regulations somewhat, imagine that, of course, but as a general statement, many of the claims will go through our insurance company first, which we have adequate coverage definitely through Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. Additionally, we will be submitting some funding requests back to FEMA for a number of different items that may be FEMA-eligible. The next key point in this situation is for President to issue a declaration that would cover individual properties, homes and businesses and those kinds of things, as well as public properties. And I think there's a reasonable expectation on our part and my part that he will likely do that when we see some of the damage estimate numbers flowing up to the federal government and FEMA. So I think overall, so far, good, so good. We had a great response, the first responders, we worked very closely and I think we're all probably still somewhat recovering from sleep deficit, among other things. Alan, I am, I know that, and staff and everyone worked well and all situations, we always have lessons learned and in this is no exception. We have a few things we think we can improve on and do better and we will address that very honestly and appropriately in all respects and very likely we'll be making some changes for future responses. But all things considered, we did dodge a serious bullet. Let it wobbled further to the east. Probably, if I could wave my magic wand, I'd say I wish it had wobbled about another four or 500 miles further east, then we wouldn't have had any issues to address in the United States. But anyway, all things considered, we're in pretty good shape and trying our best to get back to normal just as soon as possible.
Is that, you're asking, do we kind of, a number of, do we have an estimate on what damages the city incurred?
We're still pulling together the city facilities and properties. Our initial estimate for private properties is $920,000 and I think that will rise, typically they do, as more things are discovered and found, but the initial that we submitted was 920,000, just under a million, and we have the distinction for being a relatively small city to have the most destroyed buildings, which is what it is overall. But I think our public damage will be significant, particularly the damage to traffic signals that are extremely expensive, with many repairs and replacements occurred with that, and insurance and/or ultimately FEMA, depending on how it plays out, assuming everything goes forward with the declarations that we envisioned.
Anybody else? Can we move on to ordinance number 052?
I make a motion.
Close the public hearing.
Sorry. Okay, call for, close the public hearing and we will call for a motion on 04216.
I hope make a motion to approve ordinance 04216 at the first reading.
Second.
By Brendan?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Bond?
For the motion.
Councilmember Brown?
For the motion.
Mayor Hoag?
For.
Councilmember McMillan?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Walsh?
For.
Okay, we'll have a move to ordinance. Ordinance number 05216, this is granting an economic abhorrent tax exemption to Project Zeus. Mr. Garganese.
Sir, what is Project Zeus?
We'll let the attorney.
Read the ordinance in first here. Ordinance number 05-2116, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, granting an economic development abhorrent tax exemption to Project Zeus, providing an expiration date for the exemption, finding that the business meets the requirements of Section 196.012/15 Florida statutes, providing for proof of eligibility for exemption, providing a requirement for an annual report, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, and an effective date. This is first reading, also a public hearing item. Regarding this ordinance, proposing to grant an abhorrent tax exemption to Project Zeus, which is, you know, a kind of a code name that's been given to this particular business that's seeking to possibly relocate in the city of Cape Canaveral. There are a few blanks in Section 2 of the ordinance. Those blanks will be filled in after the property appraiser provides the available data to the city, which should be shortly after the resolution that you all passed on the consent agenda is delivered to the supervisor, the property appraiser, for consideration.
Let's go then, tell me what Project Zeus is.
We have your name, please. You come to the microphone and tell us your name and where you live.
Mary Schpin, 5801 North Banana River Boulevard. And I guess I haven't been to enough meetings because I don't know what Project Zeus is.
Project Zeus, as the city attorney mentioned, is a code name. It's a medical service supply company. They currently have 300 jobs in Cape Canaveral now. They're looking at, we're competing with Reston, Virginia for the possibility of the corporate headquarters and over the next several years, with the business expansion plus the corporate location here, if it all comes together and works out, we'll provide in the neighborhood of 450 to 525 jobs over time. The bulk of the jobs are 63,000 average annual salary. Additionally, let us be crystal clear on the fact that the total incentive that they would be getting from the city of Cape Canaveral and the county, the city's portion is between $12,000 and $15,000 per year for up to a 10-year period. They have to meet all their metrics, all their commitments for job and wages and everything. The county would be making an incentive as well. Their portion is higher because the county's property tax rate's higher than Cape Canaveral's, as you know, we're among the lowest in the county. Additionally, the state of Florida would be participating in it from their QTI funding program. The overall concept of tax abatement was approved by the Cape Canaveral voters in 2009 through a referendum. And this will, if this one makes it all the way through the process, to my knowledge, it would be the first actual tax abatement project in, actually built and occupied in Cape Canaveral during that period. Now, the rest of the story there is in 2019, that will be up for a revote by the public because under Florida law, you can only have the incentive or the program in place 10 years without a renewal. So the voters would have a chance again in the future in 2019 to decide if they want to continue the program. The actual overall amount that's subject to, we will receive the basic tax dollars that we receive now, just as the county, there would be an offset on new revenue based upon the dollar investment that they're putting into the building. It's, I believe, yeah, 8,600 astronaut along A1A, so it's a pretty good deal for the community. We would envision that it would help perhaps create economic opportunity additionally for the city, maybe encourage some additional restaurants or other businesses to open and meet some degree of the housing need here. We just don't know what that might be yet.
You told me more than I-
That's what I do, because I don't like people to misunderstand us and hear out on the block when I'm out there a bunch of gibberish.
Back, back to my question, it was a medical what?
A medical service company, and that's all we can tell you. We're not allowed to tell you anymore because all of us had to sign an oath not to disclose.
Which is very common.
So that's all, all the information we can give you. We're not trying to be secretive. It's just the law will not allow us to say any more than we did.
Thank you.
That's why they're called Project Zeus.
Oh, no, you'll get, you'll get a big return for your dollars. They're going to invest $4 billion. They're going to put $4 billion into this city, and they're going to bring 400 or 500 jobs.
Do we have that-
If we can land them.
Do we have that much space for a house?
Oh, yes. We're all right. We've got no problem.
Okay.
No problem. It's a welcome sight, and those people will have probably, who knows how many employees buying homes or living right here in the city and spending, so you're going to get, it's going to be quite a full back of a dollar. Anybody else want to speak to this while we're in public? Okay, back to us.
Close the public hearing?
Yes, I'll close the public hearing if nobody else wants to talk.
That's good, I think it's great. If we land it, we can come. Hopefully it will. Hopefully it will.
I am excited because it's a non-tourist-related business, and, you know, we, my, one of my big goals in life is to make sure that A1A doesn't become a gaudy tourist trip. And so if we can get, you know, 300, 400, 500 jobs, real jobs, that are not like call centers or whatever, and they're good paying, this is an amazing return for the city, and, you know, unfortunately, it did, you know, it's pretty normal in situations like this to have to sign a nondisclosure, but I think you'll be pleased with the company. And, and the nice thing about it is, like the city manager was saying, the, there's no real detrimental impact to the city in the way of property or abhorrent taxes because all it's, the only thing that's going to impact is the increase in value from where it is now. So we're still going to get where it is, the current taxes, so that's not a problem.
Plus more.
Plus more, yeah. And so it's a win-win for everybody involved, and, you know, anytime, you know, if you want to, you always want to attract the brightest and the best and the best paying and so forth, and, you know, I don't believe we're buying the business here. I think we're being, it's extremely prudent, and I really hope we can get them, we can win their business.
Yeah, I think it's going to be good for the community. I just want to know what we have in place, because a lot of times, these businesses will sell you anything to go ahead and get in. And once they're in, what do we have to make sure they carry out? I see that they don't have to, we can do something, what is it, 12, 10 years?
Yeah, it's up to 10 years. They have to meet the metrics and their projections. There will be ultimately an agreement that will be prepared by the city attorney and negotiated by staff and others involved in the process. And believe it or not, Councilmember Brown, that will come to the city council for its approval. So you guys have a seat at the table, and you get to say yea or nay. That's the way the system works.
Thank you.
So essentially, the way I read it is, we're potentially spending $15,000 of revenue that we aren't going to collect, because we're still getting the basic revenue, to invest it to try and attract more jobs to the area, not necessarily specific Cape Canaveral, but I'm assuming some of these people will want to live in our city. And also, the building, which has been vacant for several years, is going to be revamped and redone. I've seen drawings on it, and it's going to look, well, in my opinion, it's going to look much better than it is. So this is, this is our way to incentivize business to do, to redo, to redo what we want to have done, to invest in our community. So we're still going to be collecting the base revenue thing?
Yes, we will, yeah.
So this, I mean, overall, I ran some of the numbers, I ran it around twice. I mean, close the decimal point a couple of times. But overall, I think it's a great-
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have anything to go with. What, we're finished? Mr. Green, does anyone have anything?
Just to be sure, we did open and close the public hearing.
Right, right.
Yeah, just to be certain.
Okay. Anybody want to discuss anything again on what we're talking up here? Okay, then we'll call the roll.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 05-2016. Second.
Brendan? Brendan, second. Mr. Bond's motion to approve 05-2016 for Project Zeus.
Councilmember Bond?
For the motion.
Councilmember Brown?
For the motion.
Mayor Hoag?
For.
Councilmember McMillan?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Walsh?
For.
That brings us to our end of our agenda items. We need some reports. Anybody want to report? Right, start down with our attorney, Mr. Attorney.
I don't have a report.
As the audience member said, I speak too much, so I have nothing more to say.
Okay. Mr. McMillan?
I'd like to say thank you to the two people I came up and said, and recognized the city for their hard work. I think it was a phenomenal job on also the FPL, private industry, and the city. I told city manager, I still have some stuff out front, but overall, the city's looking, it was amazing coming back. I was one of the first, one of the first people to come back to try and get the port open, so I spent a couple of days with Coast Guard walking around saying, no, we can't really open the port, which was good. As to the ship, we actually, my understanding is, we delayed bringing a ship in about a day, because the problem is, if the shipping companies wanted to come in, the problem is, we couldn't get them anywhere. So that's why they had to stay out. So they were all calling incessantly, trying to get in, but they were delayed a little bit, which is, you can get them in, but you can't get them anywhere. They had to inspect the bridges and whatnot.
Brendan is a Harvard pilot, so he knows all about this.
But from my perspective, kudos to the city overall. Great job. David, move on. For responsible-
Certainly a team effort, and again, from my perspective, police and fire did exceptionally well. I think city staff did well. Again, we will critique ourselves and welcome input from others. I think the county handled it very well overall with the AOC. We had some, some issues that were particularly of concern to us over water or lack of or provision of, and unfortunately, there was a home down, I think in the Satellite Beach Indian Harbor Beach area that did totally get destroyed as a result of some decisions made on shoving off the water and those kinds of things. I think everybody always has their hands full in these situations, but I think overall, the Brevard County response was extraordinary. And it's my understanding that, and I know I said I'd be quiet, but I guess I just can't. I know that the command staff, the upper level, the sheriff and chief deputy, I believe that's what I call them, Alan, I'm not sure what you all do these days, but anyway, the very high-ranking folks in the sheriff's department, to include the sheriff himself, was all about making sure that the employees felt motivated and energized and appreciative for their efforts. So I think all things considered, we dodged a major bullet and, by and large, a pretty happy ending, particularly with the Coast Guard commander. I think we're, that looks like it's going to be, overall, an exceptionally happy ending to what would have been just a horrible situation. So all, all pretty good.
Yeah, I'd just like to give kudos to the first responders, fire department and sheriff department. And didn't Commander Moros, didn't we catch, or didn't you catch two looters or burglars during the storm?
Yes, sir. Two burglars during the storm.
Okay. Hopefully their penalties be enhanced for-
I think one of them has a sore arm, too.
They were enhanced that night by one of our patrol dogs.
Might have drawn a little blood.
Also want to thank all the city departments for the excellent job they did, and I concur with David and Brendan and probably all other council members, and I just want to thank you for everything you did and all the extra hours you spent away from your family during the storm, especially the first responders.
I am extremely grateful that, hopefully, there was some divine intervention that kept Matthew offshore, even though it came very close. And I did stay, only because there were a couple of senior citizens that did not want to vacate the beach, and I wasn't going to leave without them. They were neighbors of ours. So we stayed, and fortunately, it was not a big deal. I had 120 pounds of ice and plenty of food, so that was not a big problem. And so congratulations to the first responders for saving, let's see, I believe, is it Commander West's life?
Yes, ma'am.
And the way it was explained to me is, they did save his life. It wasn't just stopping bleeding. I mean, they saved his life. And so congratulations on that, and I hope I get to meet him someday. And on a different note, on Saturday, I had the unique opportunity to go, if anybody knows what honor flight is, we took 25 World War II veterans, actually, there were some Korean War veterans, because we're losing a lot of our World War II veterans. We took them to Washington, I was a guardian, and they were able to, we took them to seven different memorials. It was kind of a whirlwind day. Started at 1:00 in the morning and ended one, and ended at 1:00 the next morning. And I've been to the send-offs, this was my first honor flight, and I, I am absolutely amazed. These guys had so much fun. They were treated, they got the respect and honor that they were so righteously earned. And I've studied a lot about World War II. It's a lot different than a war being fought these days. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that I did that. And other than that, I'm good. This may, well, depending on what happens between now and November 8th, there are two of us up here that are, that are up for reelection, and so this may be my last full meeting. I hope not, but I want everybody to know that I sincerely enjoyed it, and, but I'm not going to say goodbye until, until you know who sings. So, thank you.
I also, as Mr. Brown stated, and all my fellow council members up here, would like to thank everyone for the efforts. Shannon, I appreciate you recognizing Florida Power Light and Bright House and our, and our businesses, because this as a community, we as a community here in Cape Canaveral really came together, and that is huge, especially for something that could have been so devastating to us if the wobble went west instead of east. We did dodge a bullet, there was probably some sort of divine intervention, but we're here today, and it would be a much different story if it moved a little further west instead of east. So thank goodness for all of that, and I'm very grateful. We also, I don't know if you all knew, but besides our firefighters doing such a great job, we also had our Brevard County Sheriff's Department positioned over in the terminal, Commander Alan Morris and, and actually, his wife were very, very instrumental in making sure that our water stayed on as long as it did. They were dealing with the Brevard County Emergency Management Team so that the water didn't get shut off unless there was an emergency. So you had some water on for a longer period of time, thanks to our commander that's here with us today. And they had some sheriff deputies right here in, in our terminal that were walking around the community and doing patrols. That's how they caught the two perpetrators that were doing some looting, so they protected us, and they were away from their families during this timeframe to make sure that we were all safe, and for those who didn't evacuate also, even though we had a mandatory evacuation. So the city staff did a great job. The Brevard County really helped us out. People worked tirelessly. I could sit here and name them all, and I'm not going to, because the city as a whole with our staff and David Green as the leader, and even our attorney was here supporting the team. So thank you, everyone involved, and thank goodness we're all here, and it's good to see you all and that you're all saved after something that could have been very devastating to us. Thank you.
I can't say anything. That is terrible. But I personally, I want to extend my sincere thanks to these guys over there. They're part of my body. I've just lived in the Indian Fire Department since, the Fire Department did. Those guys are phenomenal, and you don't hear about that stuff. 2:30 in the morning, 12 at night, 10:30 or whatever time you're sleeping, you're watching TV, you're sat down at 10:00 at night, but these guys are out there every night, and it's the same thing over and over and over. But I commend them for what they did. I mean, it was beyond belief when I heard what happened. And knowing Commander West, thankfully, he's recovered. I would like to thank everybody in our staff, the city hall people, Josh, Todd, David Dickey, Ralph Lotzovich, and John DeMille, Gus Guevara, we all, and Alan and Jeff back there, everybody done a phenomenal job. Everybody was here, they were on station. I came back in early, and we had teams formed, and everybody was on the road and out for 12, 12 and a half hours. And then long comes Waste Pro the next morning. So we, we did a great job. Thank the good man upstairs, the thing, wobbled four or five degrees, and we were on stage. Had a little damage, and I think 28, 20, 20 some odd homes were damaged, but they can be repaired. I would like to thank everybody personally for being here tonight. If anybody's got anything they want to say or open ear. Mr. Morose, would you like to say something on your department's behalf or anything?
I would. I just want to-
Sure. Come up in, in your neck, Mr. Cunningham.
Alan can speak about-
He's a hard act to follow, so I'm glad I get to go first.
Yeah, I understand that.
I would be remiss if I didn't share one, one story with you all. When we were prepping for the storm, we were meeting, Johnny, what, maybe every eight hours, we would, we would catch up with each other. And it came to the Wednesday meeting, and I was communicating with, with Dave and Johnny. I said, have you guys decided what you're going to do? He said, well, we're meeting at 8:00, and we'll get back with you. Because I couldn't make the meeting that morning. So they called me and said, we'll just, we'll, we'll meet you at 8:30 or so, and we'll figure out what we're going to do. So the first thing we did is sat down, and they, he and Dave looked at me, and he said, our decision is this. It's based on what you're going to do, because we're not going to leave you.
Oh, wow.
We refuse to leave the city if you're leaving deputies behind. So we devised a plan. I had 20 guys with me. We stayed at the cruise terminal one, ready for 1:60, and I have to tell you, it got a little intense about 4:00, 5:00 o'clock in the morning when the air conditioner started coming off the roof. But I knew these guys were just, you know, a quarter mile away from us, that we had a place to retreat if it got that bad. And, you know, I wanted you, wanted to make sure you all knew, you know, how that all panned out. They just, they sat across from me and refused to leave as long as we were staying. So that's excellent teamwork. These guys are very humble about what they do, but the mayor's right, you know, they're out there all the time. We have developed a wonderful working relationship with these guys, and to me, the last several years have been the best with them. And with the new station, having them close, our guys are always invited, they know they're invited in ours. Well, I had Johnny's phone turned off a couple of times because he wasn't behaving. He couldn't get in. But anyway, it's back on now, he's good. But thank you for sharing with us, and if I can be of any assistance, feel free to call.
Thank you, Alan. You guys are great. Johnny, you want to talk to us?
No, I have nothing. I appreciate it. Alan, you all talk before.
That's our assistant park chief over there. He's very humble. Thank you, Johnny Vander.
Thanks, Johnny.
Thank you, sir. All right, if we have nothing else, we'll go there. Everybody there?
Yep.
Richard?
Let's go.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Good to see you.
Yeah, I saw you defend that.
Good to see you guys around here. Are you coming around more often?
Yes, we are.
Oh, I don't mean to-
Just talking about how Mr. Hope runs the meeting. He runs the board.
I missed you guys. I'm glad you're back. This is awesome.
Thank you very much. I'm hoping to get award money.
Well, if you need anything from us, we're here now.
You all have a great night.
I think they need the third, say the third. Say the third. Say the third.
Well, if you need anything from us, we're here now.
Thank you.
Y'all have a great night.
I think they meet the third, say the third. We'll, we'll give you plenty of heads up.
Oh, yeah.